There you go Chair.
Ready?
Yeah.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the Neighborhood Commission meeting to order. This is our regular meeting Monday, August twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three. It's just a few minutes past six P M. I'd like to start by calling the role. Bernal.
Here.
Shane. Clark.
Here.
Melendres. You know, Oshiro.
Here.
And our newest member, Smith.
Here.
Tom. All right, we have four currently. We did have five, and we'll see if Melendres pop back in. Okay, thank you. I'd like to start by introducing Patrick Smith. This is our new commissioner, the Chair of the One Neighborhood Board, and since we have folks online, he had a chance to say hello before we started the meeting. So I'd like to officially welcome Patrick to our meeting this evening. Thank you very much. I'd like to move to Agenda Item Number Two, Initial Conveting Procedures. I'm going to start by reading the rules of speaking, and then we'll basically talk about that right after that. Anyone wishing to speak is asked to raise his or her hand, and when recognized by the Chair, to address comments to the Chair. Speakers are to keep their comments under two minutes. Public testimony taken at the beginning of each agenda item. Please silence all electronic devices. Note that the Commission may take action on any agenda item. As required by the State Sunshine Law, specific issues not noted on this agenda cannot be voted upon unless properly added to the agenda. I would add that at our July meeting, we did have a discussion on the rules of speaking, and we did adopt changes to our rules of speaking. But I was told prior to the meeting that there are some issues with what we had adopted at the last meeting, where we were going to accept all public testimony for agenda and non-agenda items under public concerns. And that was passed, but I understand there's a problem with that. So I'll turn it over to Lloyd so he can explain what the problem is with that.
Thank you, Chair. It's just that the state law changed, and it requires public testimony prior to each agenda item, which was basically the way it was the Commission handled the public testimony before. So while we do have a section where we have public concerns for items not listed on the agenda, whenever an agenda item comes up, we will allow public, you should allow public testimony.
Okay, so what that means is that we don't have to change the rules of speaking as is noted on our agenda currently, because it basically reflects what Lloyd just said, as it takes us back to the, what we had prior to the change we enacted at the last meeting. Boy, do you think we need to rescind that in a motion, or?
Maybe they passed that new.
It was adopted, so do we need to rescind?
Oh, yeah.
Adopted. Best practice would be to rescind, but as if not.
Okay, if everybody understands that, any questions? If not, I'll ask for a motion to rescind that motion that we had. And actually, we take it at the last meeting relating to adoption of oral testimony rules.
So if somebody needs to make a motion?
Yeah, do we have a motion to do just that?
I'll second it.
Europe. What either?
Oh, so.
Going to move?
So moved?
Okay, second?
No, I can't do what he did.
Yeah.
So you need to wait a second.
Second. Any further discussion? I see I hadn't raised, none of the commissioners have questions, so Mr. Lai, you recognize?
Thank you, Chair. I'm just curious, though, if this motion as made or seconded is adopted, then will the Commission then be left with no current policy on its speaking rules, and you therefore would need to adopt a further procedure? Just wanted to clarify if that was the case, otherwise the.
Go back to the rules of speaking that you see on the agenda for tonight. That was what we had.
Right.
Last meeting, and that's what we changed, so we're going back to the previous rules.
But just to clarify, were those actually adopted at the first convening meeting in July?
What's that?
You know, I think the best thing is to rescind the previous motion, take that vote, and then put another motion on the table to.
Adopt the current.
Adopt the previous.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? If not, we can take the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried. Okay, now the next thing is we're going to adopt rules of speaking. Basically, it's in front of you on the agenda. So do we have a motion to adopt those rules of speaking? It's been moved by Commissioner Smith. Do we have a second?
I second.
Thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Not all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Motion is carried, so that will be our rules of speaking. So we're going to move on to public concerns. Everybody has a chance to register any public concerns if they have one. So I'll open the floor up to public concerns. Are there any? Is one in the audience? Can you come up here?
You can sit right over there. That'll be closer to the mic for you.
Could you identify yourself and share what your concern is?
My name is Sarah Work, W W R T H, and I am the new member on the Waikiki Neighborhood Board. And the reason why I joined the board was because I was finding time and time again, I would attend meetings and I was not allowed to speak. And I know that Mr. Dillon, I've already heard this complaint about a certain demographic being allowed, given favoritism. But now that I'm on the board, there's still a problem of there being a bias. So, for example, on our board, we're no longer community focused. Like on our, sorry, on our board, it's now, as the Chair said, he thinks the most important thing about the board is for, is to hear from our elected officials. So our, most of our time in meetings is spent hearing statistics, hearing, like, reading off the newsletter. And the problem is, is that the Citizen Comet is placed at the end of the agenda. And so, for example, July agenda, the public, they're second to last on the agenda item, and they're given five minutes total for all the public to speak. And we have a two and a half minute, so that's two people that get to speak. August, again, time and time again, that keeps happening. So my issue is that unfortunately, our Waikiki Neighborhood Board now has special interest groups or developers taking up the majority of the presentation time instead of hearing from the public. And I know I spoke with Mr. Lloyd about it, but I don't know what else to do, so I came here.
Who's the Chair?
Chair?
Yes, yes, I have.
Are you the Chair?
What was the response?
The first response when I was just in the audience was, he never responded. When I went to the next meeting, I asked him, "I'm sorry, sir, did you not get my email?" I didn't get a response from you, and he said, "And you're not going to." So I followed him, and I said, "I'm sorry, sir, did I offend you?" He was like, "You said I'm doing a bad job." And I said, "Sir, no, no, the first paragraph was nothing but compliments." And then I just offered help, like, they have this little device that has the lights, like, it goes from green, yellow, like the U.S. Supreme Court uses, to help, to help, because it's hard to cut people off. I understand that. I'm probably about to be cut off too. However, what do you do when there's so much, the Chair has so much power? What do you do? And who do you go to to make sure the laws are enforced, the rules are enforced? So I thought it was you guys.
Commissioners, have any questions? I have a question.
Yes, I have a question.
Sure.
Have you, have you tried to make a motion to increase the amount of public concern time? A motion to the board, to the whole board?
So I had made a motion to, well, first we set up the rules. It's set up to two and a half minutes. So the first meeting, I noticed that happened. I thought maybe it was just a loop. Then I saw it again, it's happening. So now that I see that it's happening again and again, that would be a great option. So I would just make a motion to ask how to be placed earlier.
Well, either a change in the, you know, agenda to price it earlier, or an increase in the amount of time.
Yeah.
There may be a time constraint in the meeting. I mean, I don't know, but with either of those two options, at least you try, because it is a majority-driven operation, so.
But if it's supposed, the board is formed to be for the public.
Well, maybe I should retract how I said that. I didn't, I don't mean that we should silence the minority, minority, but, but anyway, those are ways to maybe, you know, maybe engage the rest of the board, see if they, they share your feelings.
Sure. I will say that, yes, I've spoken and read through some emails with O I P on some of the issues relating to this. One of the changes that I think may help in the case of what you've brought up was in terms of the agendas as they're published, I know that the Waikiki Agenda, they had time sort of limits, like, we'll take up this item from seven to seven-ten, the next item, seven-eleven to seven-fifteen, whatever. I did read over some correspondence with O I P and did talk with them. That is one thing that O I P did recommend to remove those time limits. So at least that may help the situation a little bit as well.
Well, I think it's just the intent. The intent is to give the public just five minutes. That's the problem, like, the fact that his, his, his mission statement, his, our Chair Report says, it's for the public to hear from the public officials to have presentations. I think that's the issue. There's a, so, so that's a great idea. I'll ask that to be moved forward, because the public does need to be heard, because I did talk to O I P, and they said that if they don't get to an agenda item, then there's no violation. There's no, if the public think, if they're the last on the agenda item and they didn't get to speak, there's no, there's no violation. So that was one of the issues now that the public's place of end. So that's a good point, moving forward.
What others suggest, what are the agenda items? You can request specifically, as a member of the board, talk to the Chair, Semeda requests in writing to the Chair, ask for specific item to be placed on the agenda, and you could frame that to talk about, you know, what, increasing the time for public concerns. And he's obligated to place that on the agenda.
So there have been issues.
Sorry?
There had, there have been actually issues with that too. So unfortunately, I submitted that, and I was told by Mr. Lloyd that he has to place it on the agenda or next agenda or put it up for motion. You can't just say no. So I submitted an email and followed N C O's request that, you know, I was going to suggest having, allowing us to form committees. I wanted it up for motion, and I had some committee ideas and people who were interested in joining those committees and chairing it. So I brought that, and the N C O said, like, you need to have a short sentence that, and O I P said, the sentence has to convey enough. The public knows whether or not they want to engage. So I wrote, I wrote two options of sentences. One was only like seven words, and then, so it actually got reduced down to the Board Organization Committee. So instead of what I had written was that we were going to form committees that would enable committee, like, issues to be addressed.
Well, that's a second issue. I think you got two, and one is extension of the public concerns time. Second is committees. I don't know what your issues, you know, these are, but, you know, that's, that's, that's a separate subject.
True, and I guess my issue is I just want to be treated equally, because I was only given two minutes to speak. I went back at agendas, I looked a year and a half. No board member has ever been given just two minutes to speak. So, but, but I will ask officially, and then I'm like, hopefully I won't be back.
I see a hand in the, on the screen. Mr. Lai, you had a comment, question?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, thank you, Chair. Some comments to the commissioners for public. In light of the further use of the written summaries for video record in lieu of more detailed meeting minutes, I again implore unto you the need for the Commission to compel the use of automatic full transcript generation to be made available to the public and cross-searchable within the N C O website. This would require no heavy curation by N C O staff, but the text could then be rather accurately transcribed by A I these days with minimal storage footprint and hence permit the public to search across meetings for instances of the use of the term, for example, Aloe Y Canal or similar, and be served up the list of neighborhood board meetings in which said term was voiced and recognized by the auto-transcriptionist. In today's age of technology, this is an expected tool. I think we conducted a preliminary test of something that could do this in the past, but I never really got to examine the output from such, and I hope that we can reconsider that as we move forward. Second, commissioners, why is the petition for clarification regarding an explanation of the extent of permissions following self-recusal during meetings of a neighborhood board as submitted to the Commission on the fifth of March of this year, still not been addressed despite being referenced during every meeting of this Commission since its twenty-eight March twenty-twenty-three meeting? I wonder if the city's managing director did indeed discuss this matter with the Executive Secretary on or after ten March, as was noted in email correspondence on that day? And again, if duly submitted requests as per the Neighbor Plan are consistently ignored by this organization and its support wing, how can the public feel at ease that their legitimate concerns and questions will be taken seriously or even reviewed as mandated by the Neighbor Plan? Now, if you as a commissioner, whether new or old, have not received and reviewed a copy of this particular request, please ask the Secretary why such has not been forwarded to you for review, and please review Neighbor Plan two eleven one oh four. I ask that you please provide a reply or direct the Secretary to do so during next month's meeting of the Commission. Similarly, longstanding request has been for an explanation of why the Neighborhood Commission failed to follow the Neighbor Plan and did not review all written responses to a report provided by a hearing officer. This was submitted for review and explanation in May of twenty-twenty-two, yes, twenty-twenty-two. Again, please ask the Secretary why such has not been shared. We really do hope to get a reading on that. Third, what are the requests made last month for the Commission to permit the use of Arabic top-level agenda enumerators to permit properly sortable documents within a board's Google Drive folder? What outside of stubbornness and obstinacy would preclude such a simple permission? Now, the gist of many of these concerns brought to the Commission is simply this: We expect the commissioners and the N C O staff to be at least as fast out with the Neighbor Plan as the neighborhood board chairs and members that are subjected to this, so that the blank stares which tend to arise when tenants of the Neighbor Plan, even if obscure, are referenced during such meetings are mitigated. Even commissioners without neighborhood board experience, of which a minority are certainly permitted, should read and regularly reread the Neighbor Plan so that jaw-dropping nonsecreters, which occasionally arise, prompting actions which are soundly at odds with established principles for the Neighbor Plan, are precluded in the future. Thank you, Chair.
I don't get any questions for me. I don't think that question's for me, so.
Lloyd or Dylan, you have responses or?
Not, well, Mr. Lai's. For me, not for everything, but just maybe for a couple of things. Regarding the A I, we did pilot that, and what we found was ultimately that there are still a lot of issues lacking with it, especially when it comes to, even as you noted, Aloe Y, you know, and other native Hawaiian words. A lot of that gets botched up in the A I, and it took us more time having to go back in and fix that stuff than it was worth it in the time to actually do it, if you wanted something that was readable. I mean, if you want a raw transcript that's all messed up, then we can go that way, but. And then regarding the Google Drives, the N C O has encouraged the creation of those, really as a matter of public good and benefit, to be able to access information a lot faster. I mean, as you know, it used to be mail would come to the Neighborhood Commission office itself, and it might be a month before the Chair or the board is even apprised of any kind of information, unless it got scanned and then sent to everyone. And so I think that we were just hoping that the Google Drive would be more of a public benefit than not, and it seems like there are certain things, particularly issues that were raised, that seem to be sort of antithetical to just trying to be a public good and making issues bigger than what they have to be. We would hope that the boards can just figure out a way to make the Google Drives work, and it seems like ninety-nine percent of them have. But things like the way numbers are on the documents, I mean, we really have not considered why that's an issue.
Lloyd, I have a question. If we had these kinds of queries from members of the boards, like, relying, and we do work to address it, do we respond to them?
Yeah, I have in the past.
No, no, I mean, like what Dylan has been saying. Have you responded to him? Because he raised a question, because some of this stuff we don't see or haven't heard, so we don't know where, when he says we haven't responded, I don't know what he's talking about. So if you've, if you've looked into it, have you responded in every instance, or just keep the, you know, whatever you found somewhere and not sharing it? Because I don't know, I haven't heard that response or what the findings were, so maybe it will be helpful if we respond. And if you want to bring it to the attention of the Commission, then you just got to ship it to us, so we know, you know, what your thoughts are, or if you want to run it by, run it by the Commission before you respond to Mr. Lai, then I will encourage you to do that, because otherwise, when we get these kinds of queries, like, Solire, you know, brings these up every meeting. So if we've responded to any of his queries and you've done work to look into them, can we please either respond to him or, and copy the commission, so we know, you know, like, what's going on? If not, we're kind of out of the loop and have no clue as to what's going on.
Good.
Is that true? I mean, is that what we're doing? We're not, we're not responding to it?
Some issues we respond directly, some we have not, for various reasons.
So the type that he, the types that he brings up like tonight, I mean, are these all queries that we've not responded to?
No, I think, I think what it is sometimes is that we do respond, and it's not acceptable. So, but as far as, you know, I remember the self-recusal, like, and I'm trying to remember exactly what it is, but I'll talk to him about that.
Yeah, because if, if you need clarity on the question, find, you can, you can get clarity. But if you respond, it doesn't mean there has to be agreement on the other side. You have a response, that's it. It's like a question asked and answered. We don't always like the answers we get when we ask questions, so that's what I mean. So as long as it's addressed, and if it cannot be addressed, then, you know, then you can let it go, you know. We have to prioritize the work that we have. If it's something that's going to cause or generate too much work, then you can put a priority on it, or, you know, you can tell them that it's in the queue.
Right.
The address. That way, at least you've responded, said it's coming. It's not going to be a problem. The least person that's asked, whether it's him or anybody else, and they know that you've received the question, and you're looking into it, and we'll get back to it at some point in time.
Good.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
Is there a problem with that, or if not, yeah, if we can do that, then it'll help, I think. Questions like that, call them. Yeah, are there any other public concerns tonight? Okay, I don't see any hands. We're going to move on to the next item, approval of minutes for July twenty-fourth. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? Are there any questions or comments from the commissioners? Seeing on, I see a hand in the audience. Go ahead. I see Mr. Lai. You recognized? Mr. Lai, you recognize?
Chair, Chair, thank you. Just unmuteing. I posted into the chat a proposed change that will improve the accuracy of the meeting minutes on page two within one of the public concerns raised last month, again, regarding, subtitle is Google Drives. But the proposed change clarified not that there was a request for use of Roman numerals, but for a request for clarification of why Arabic numerals were specifically not permitted by N C O staff. Again, as was just discussed, the Google Drives are great to use, but if we could just be able to sort related documents by Arabic enumerators, which are in a logical order to us in today's modern era, rather than using Roman numerals, it'll be much easier for our constituents to read and follow along the documents as we progress through the agenda. So as proposed, the, the change is this. For Google Drives, it's following the first part of the sentence, following the comma. It will be changed to the following: And requested an opinion from the Neighborhood Commission regarding the stated prohibition by N C O staff of using Arabic numerals as top-level agenda item enumerators, even though such would permit user-friendly sourcing of meeting-related documents within online folders. Commissioners, this accurately represents what was said and asked and permits a record of why that question was asked, and again, points towards the need for a response. I hope that you will consider this proposed change. Thank you, I do.
Yeah.
I just want, Kevin, if you can just give me clarification on your use of the word prohibition or where maybe that came from? I think you're on mute.
Thank you. This was Deputy Director speaking.
Yes.
Yes, thank you, sir. Well, you know, several times, Neighborhood Board thirteen has attempted to submit by the current Chair, a meeting agenda that uses Arabic numerals as top-level enumerators. It has been rejected and sometimes changed post hoc by Neighborhood Commission before being published back to Roman numerals, which does two things. It can sometimes disrupt the numbering of items in our public facing Google Drive, so they don't sort properly. And secondly, it really goes against the tenants of the Neighborhood Commission system, wherein the agenda is under the purview of the board chair, and I cannot think of any legitimate reason why the use of Arabic numerals would be a problem.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. It sounds like we're discussing the merits of this particular issue rather than what should, the minutes should be.
I'm going to move on. We have this agenda, approval of minutes, so do we have a motion to approve the minutes, modify them?
I saw a move.
Second.
So we have a motion to approve the minutes. I take it as circulated or as amended by what we see, what's on the chat?
Oh, I thought the motion was as amended, as the proposed amendments.
Okay, are the commissioners all in agreement with that?
Yes.
Prove the minutes as amended, as proposed by Mr. Lai in the chat. Okay, so the motion is to approve the minutes as amended. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you very much. The minutes are approved, as amended. Next item, the Executive Secretary's report. Is there any public testimony on this agenda item? I see no, 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 no hands up, so Lloyd, proceed, please.
Yeah, I just want to do a conference of chairs. We are looking at, and again, it's a number of things that go into determining a date, but we're looking at, I'm looking at September twenty-third, it's a Saturday. But it is pending a number of items, including a location, that is acceptable.
Okay.
And that is another concern.
No, I mean, I, I, I'm not being, you know, funny about that. I mean, a lot of people, it is the middle of football season, so I know a lot of people have conflicts, especially depending on what time, like, you know, the local games are.
Well, I, I, I understand, and again, there was a number of considerations. I don't anticipate this to be a long conference of chairs, maybe two hours. There's a number of things I would just like to discuss with, or inform the chairs and the vice chairs, so.
Okay, you can let us.
But I'll let you know. I'm just letting you know that that's on the, on the table.
Is that it?
Yep, that's it.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to unfinished business. The Neighborhood Commission survey, do we have any comments, testimony on this item before we start? Seeing none, um, Commissioner Melendez, you wanna take, take to start this uh, the survey?
Um, yes, I'm sorry. I just, I left the meeting. I had to come back into it. I think we have some trouble with the bandwidth. So are you addressing the survey now?
Yes.
Okay, um, Dylan, I'm having a little bit of trouble on my end with bandwidth. So you can share the document and I'll talk it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Second.
Yeah, we got the survey in the last meeting. So all of the commissioners should have it. There was another item I know that uh, sent out today, right? So I don't know if everybody got that.
Yeah, I sent it to everyone. Let me just address it. Uh, it looks good. I'm really pleased with it. Dylan, tell me when you have it up.
One moment. I need to email this on the work right now.
Thank you.
I'll just read yours in one second. Your eyes are on paper. Got it from my head.
Yes.
I'm gonna do like a five-minute overview of it, then the commissioners can read it, et cetera.
One second. All right.
Okay, good. Make it bigger so people can see it.
Yes, sir. Close this. You said. But it didn't get figured out. That's small. Sorry. Those days even.
It kinda centered. Can everyone see that? I'm gonna go ahead and talk it now. Okay, what I have here, um, I have the survey. This is just a cover memo. I'm sending it to the chairs and all that. And as I come down into the, the document itself, um, it talks about governmental just introduction. Then we come down into the survey, talks about age, talks about status. And what I've done, I spoke with Dylan about this last week and I've actually uh, centered it on a number of uh, of questions in order to bring out the constituency, the actual feeling of the board. And then I'm, I'm ax, I'm uh, so that we understand who is answering the questions on the survey. And then from there, we go into uh, the material itself, board preferences, et cetera, neighborhood assistance. We talk about proficiency scores. Um, these are just, they're not random. They're actually um, a weighted value. Uh, when I write, cause I'm the, I write specific occasions for budget and finance. Uh, I'm the contractor procurement expert. And when I do that, I do that like in a wait, in the RFPs, the weighted value. So we're following the same premise for these as a rated value. And then uh, average, good, excellent, et cetera. And as we come down further, uh, talk about the council of chairs, uh, streaming it also opening it up just for the uh, the chairs or for the board members also. Um, item twelve, coming down into uh, NCO as far as the uh, responses, et cetera. And so we're looking at too little, just right to, too much. So I'm choosing relative terms that's easily understandable. As we come down towards the end of the survey, what are, um, talking about the questions that we talked about before concerning NCO that was put on the street before, just so we get some feedback from the chairs, cause that's what they're asking to do. They wanna give us feedback. And the last two questions are just about, uh, what do we like best about the board system? Uh, what do we like least and what would we like to see on the improvement? Talk about board response meeting. So I took a, I, in the questions here, I embedded actually what had been voiced before with the NCO about some changes in policy, et cetera. I put those in the form of questions that we can get the support back from uh, the boards. And I'm asking that these are not just filled out by the board chairs and the vice chairs, but also by each board member. What we'll do when we acquire it, well, uh, I'll, I'll go ahead and put the information onto a Excel spreadsheet and then export that out into a graphic. We have some really good graphic representations. The items where I'm asking for, tell me what you think. They'll get, those are gonna be extrapolated a little bit differently. Once again, in a graphic, but we're gonna say, okay, so many board members asked that we address this more than the other, especially when it talks about what are you looking at of the neighborhood plan? I have four categories there, taking right off the, uh, the table of contents from the neighborhood plan as to the, the categories which they may address. And then from there, we can go into specifics. I wanna deal with things of a material value, not as a clerical value per se. I wanna see what material value that the board members and the chairs would like to see or would like more information on, especially in the training area, uh, communication, training, communication, and then, and then we'll boil this down to uh, the planning committee or consideration for narrative consideration and adoption of changes of the plan. We'll follow the same changes of the plan that we've done in the past. We'll take it, boil it down internally and then come out with a draft, shoot it out to the board chairs, have them review that, come back with uh, uh, amendments, adoptions, et cetera. Uh, comments, questions, concerns, and then we boil that down into a final draft. So that's where we're at.
Okay, commissioners, any questions of uh, Commissioner Melendez?
Welcome to take it and read it. It's your leisure and then shoot me an email on questions if you want. Are, I don't know if you wanna spend the time right now on the document, uh, but I'd rather probably, um, I'm doing it on my time as far as my committee time, not as agenda item. So I don't wanna uh, put a kink into the schedule that Chair Shor has. So if you'd like to, you can, I can address some quick questions now, then we'll address them via email and then boil it down to a, a final draft for next meeting.
Commissioner, uh, Bernal?
Hi, um, Commissioner Melendez, um, I just received this just before the meeting started. So I just wanna clarify. We are allowed to review this draft that you emailed to us before anything goes out, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Do you have a timeline of when we need to get, you know, anything, um, any of our thoughts towards this to you by?
Um, I would like it the next week or two. I wanna boil it down and have it ready for presentation as a final draft at the next commission meeting.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Steven, I have a question.
Yes.
The question you sent out today. That kind of demographic questions, are these in addition to the questions you presented at the June meeting?
The June one is revised, what you have in front of you is the final rendition. This is how we wanna approach it.
The questions that you had for Neighborhood Commission and you had another one for Neighborhood Board, although they were the same questions, uh, can scratch that and then gonna look at the one that you sent out today?
The one that I sent out today supersedes it.
The only other thing is.
We'll address the other questions under separate cover. We're fine. I wanna get things out of material value.
Did, did the survey committee have a meeting?
No. We'll do that as we, as we gather information back from the commissioners, we'll do a meeting. And then we'll boil this down into a, another draft, uh, prior to presentation.
So are you gonna do what again?
I'll receive the next couple of weeks, comments, concerns and questions from the commissioners. Then we can have a virtual meeting uh, from the survey committee and you, Chair Shor. And then we'll boil that down into a draft and the draft will be presented at the next meeting.
Okay. Did you have questions or comments? I'm gonna go to Lloyd. Do you have any you wanna share before I take further comments from the uh, audience?
I just think it would be appropriate to have a committee meeting first and then have the committee provide the, the full commission with its findings. And it's normal. That's the normal process.
Maybe, maybe that's a meeting that Stephen could have virtually, you know, you know,
Yeah, yeah. I mean.
Virtual meeting and then, you know, just set it up and run it by them and any further questions, uh, and I, I, I take it that any of the commissioners, if they wanted to attend, they could.
Yeah. Well, it would have to have a physical location per state law.
Well, here, you know.
Yes.
Commission office, so. Uh.
Targeted two weeks.
Is that, is that fair enough, uh, Stephen? We, you know, just noticed, put out a notice to have a, a election, the survey committee meeting and um, any commissioners that I wanna attend, you know, they can't like, as with any of the committee meetings. Um, and the other thing I was gonna ask is our new commissioner, if they have any preference on committees, but you know, I, I, I don't, I haven't done that yet. I'll, I'll go to the next one. So I don't know where, where, which committee will end up, but uh, there could be another man. We'll see.
Yeah.
Well, let's target the meeting for the survey committee on September eleven. That work for you guys?
Um, yes, I, Mahia here. Um, I would definitely, Chair, I would appreciate a to be present at a survey committee meeting. Thank you.
And then I'll, I'll send out invites.
Thank you.
Uh, I'll move on to uh, questions from the audience. Uh, Mr. Beren, Larry? You have a question on.
Chair and commissioners, uh, uh, I, uh, looking at the survey, Commissioner Melendez, I think it's very well put together. I do wanna strongly recommend, since you're reaching out all the time and effort to put this together, this is a great opportunity to reach out to the chairs and get some really creative and resourceful inputs. Uh, you're gonna canvas them. You're gonna have some good statistics, but you need to have flexibility with this with the additional page for the chairs and vice chairs to make comments. And those comments are invaluable to you uh, to be able to work uh, some of the issues, especially if they address anything with the neighborhood plan or with minutes and things like that. Uh, that's my input. Thank you.
Larry, that's very well taken. Yeah, on the last page of the uh, survey, it says to just attach additional pages. Great, we'll do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Lai, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, just wanted to address Commissioner Melendez. I'm wondering what are the key actionable items anticipated from the survey? In looking at the list of questions as they came by, I wonder if you're intending to draw correlations between, for example, board member longevity and other issues. Otherwise, I wonder why those particular questions are there. Thirdly, was consideration given to translating this survey instrument to a Google form to permit electronic data capture directly into a spreadsheet and avoid legibility issues? And I'm wondering if any NCO staff time will be required to compile and validate any of the manually transcribed data that you receive, whether by paper return or by email reply?
Thank you for the questions. Um, I don't think we're gonna, we'll have the survey committee make their recommendations at the ju, at the September eleven meeting. Um, the question says we refer to the demographics. We wanna know who we're talking to. That's gonna draw us the
Uh, we lost Commissioner Melendez. Give him a minute. Now we'll give him a minute so he can get back on.
It's still gonna go through committee first. So there's a lot to be discussed publicly. It wouldn't be promoted to everybody. And that committee is a public meeting. It's a public meeting.
Can we give him this chance to get back on? But since he's not, I think, uh, we can move on from.
You know, um, Chair, could I say one?
One more day.
Yeah, just one real quick. Uh, I just would like to caution the people that would be involved in this that the day-to-day operations are the purview of the commission office, not the commission or this committee. Um, some of the questions related to personnel performance, which I think is an area that you, this survey should not get into. Um, and, and, and it's just a, it, it's not a warning at all. It's just a, a observation that.
Can, can, since the survey is not finalized, can you or Dylan, can the survey meeting, and if you have any of those concerns, make sure you bring them up. So if there are any inappropriate kinds of questions, then we cannot.
Yeah, we certainly will work with the, with the commission.
Yes.
And the committee.
Uh, sure. Sure. That's, that's, that's uh, why I think it'd be very helpful. The other thing I'd mention is that the survey that was done in the past, uh, that's on the uh, commission website, in the commissioner packets, there are the survey results from the last two surveys. So I think the last survey that was done incorporated similar questions that Commissioner Melendez shared with us tonight. So if you wanna take a look at those, you know, you can see what the, how the results came out.
Commissioner Melendez?
Yeah, I'm back. Yeah, I had to, I lost bandwidth there and I'm back. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Melendez, I just wanted to, um, let's talk offline about scheduling your committee. We're happy to help with the facility. Um, but yeah, same rules apply as the board sunshine law. We need one week in advance for your agenda. It needs to be public. Um, but caution the commissioners, you cannot have more than kind of forum of your commission at that meeting. So a lot of people seem interested. Be aware of that.
Yeah, cause there's just Commissioner Melendez and Commissioner Chelit's currently on the committee. So, um,
You can't all show up then.
Yeah, that's what I mean. You gotta watch that.
That's what the commissioners should be aware of.
Why, if there's more of an outpouring, I think we can only get one, maybe one person.
Yeah, I was also, I don't know, but um,
unless we add somebody today.
Yeah, I can, I can talk to him online about that.
Yeah, we, we can talk on.
Okay.
Okay, Dylan?
Yes?
Dylan, I put out there, um, September eleven, look at your schedule, get back to me. If you wanna send out the meeting notice, we can do that after uh, polling the commissioners. That'd be just fine.
Mr. Melendez, is there a way we can change that date right now? Um, that's a personal conflict for me.
Give me a different date.
Any other day. Uh, let's talk offline and then everyone will know because the agenda has to go out. We can advance. Everyone will be aware. Watch out for that sometime in September.
Yeah.
Twelve.
Thank you.
Done.
Okay, you're gonna move on to the, uh, the next item on our agenda, committee reports. Um, do we have any committee reports? We already did the survey committee, so elections committee. Um, prayers are here, so I don't believe they met either. So I don't think there's a report. Neighborhood Plan Committee also didn't have a meeting. So the only item is we did change the composition of the committee. So that should be reflected the next time we meet. It is in our uh, minutes from July as to who was appointed. Uh, Claire Tomomoto is the chair of the elections committee. Jonathan Ching was moved to the neighborhood plan committee. Uh, Stephen Melendez, who will be chair of the uh, survey. Neighborhood Plan Committee of, since it's still new and they haven't met, I, I haven't appointed a chair. Yet, but I'm inclined possibly to appoint Commissioner Ching as chair of of the neighborhood plan. This, uh, I haven't talked to him, but that'll be my recommendation. He can assume that role because, you know, with his background, I think it would be real help to have him serve as chair of the neighborhood plan committee. And Commissioner Smith, do you, do you have any uh, preference or do you wanna think about it?
No, if I have my preference, it'd be the neighborhood plan committee, but it seems like that's, you know, I don't know.
No, we always need people on that committee. So I think if you wanna serve on that, that, that'll be fine. I'll put you there. If, can we do that then? Commissioner Smith?
No, we currently, so from the last meeting, it's been maxed out with the four, cause we're going to five. So we have no chair, but we have Bernal, Ching, Melendez and yourself as a non-member, which actually might be okay now that I think about it.
So I cannot add anymore to the neighborhood plan. Why not?
Dylan as the chair. Since he's a non-voting member.
We can, we can take a look at that.
Yeah, I just, you cannot have all five of you there. So if he's appointed chair, you can still be the.
No, I was thinking, like I said, I was depending on any Commissioner Ching. No, I was thinking, like I said, I was running any Commissioner Ching, Chair.
And you would step on.
Well, I'd be ex officious. Yeah, so I could serve on that, uh, because I don't vote, cannot vote if I'm ex officious.
Yeah, but you still have.
Unless I'm appointed.
You can have five commissioners at a committee meeting.
Yeah, you have.
That's four.
Five members at a.
That's all I'm saying. If you would like to completely remove yourself from it.
Well, Mr. Chair.
Not really.
If, if, if there's an issue, I could serve in another capacity.
Well, well, why don't we check with, um, John?
Okay.
And see if he's, if he's available.
We'll, we'll leave that there. Yeah, and then we'll see. Okay, uh, I don't see any hands, so we're going to move on to announcements. Next meeting is scheduled for Monday, September 25th at 6:00 PM here at Kapalama Halli. Uh, anything else for the commissioners? If not, we are moving to adjournment of the sunshine meeting and then moving on to agenda item 10, which is the adjudicatory matters that we have to discuss this evening. So is there anything else? If not, uh, please adjourn. Thank you very much. We're going to move into the, uh,